There's no criminal penalty, thirty days of two hundred dollars. It's just a fine. I didn't know whether we needed something where if it was unpaid within a certain period of time, that it needed to be added to the city tax bill or some way of putting some teeth.
Absolutely. I agree with you. I almost said Judge Milling. Again, Councilman Milling, I agree with you. I can certainly speak with Mr. Garland and Attorney Etheridge, and we can do something and maybe bring it back to the next council meeting and make a recommendation at that time.
What do you think about charging after the third town? What's the charge there?
The biggest thing for our side on the fire side, we don't have to worry about that. Let's say it's a hospital, make sure they get the alarms fixed. I just go as the fire marshal and we close them down. We tell the person with the business we're going to close them down, shut the doors, which we can, there's no money involved. That's what the state statutes, that's what we had to do this last time, and within thirty minutes of my last call to Rhode Island, the guy had the alarm fixed. So the ordinance in place will help us a lot.
Take with this license if we actually.
As the fire marshals, the ones that we have here, if the alarm's not repaired, we can win the, closing the doors.
That takes care of the businesses. Will this apply to residents as well, who happen to have folks who have alarm systems, systems in their private residences?
Most of their alarm stuff, if you don't mind me talking to you.
Sure, absolutely.
We don't have a big problem. You may have, an older person has a problem with their alarms, that's not what we're concerned about. We could let, we helped Ms. Smith or Ms. Janus, whatever. Our biggest problems with these businesses. And not giving, we show up at a business and we're supposed to have a key holder. And the guy stands outside, and we have some knock box keys, but we don't like to handle them without the police. And we tell this, there's a business on South Main Street right now, their alarm goes off as soon as the weather changes. They'll wake up, the guys will wake up at midnight, two thirty, four thirty, and five because the alarm is off. And there's no key holder, nobody on the list. You open the box up, there's no one. And we're just looking for a way to say, okay, fix it, and we're going to shut the doors.
And then there are times that our folks will respond, the police personnel will respond. The key holder doesn't come out, we can't get into the building to determine if a burglary has taken place. And so the only thing that we will be able to do is do an exterior check to make sure that the exterior seems to be in place. But we can't get into the building to check it because we can't get, you can't get in touch with the key holder. And we believe if we start assessing some fines and fees to some of these folks, then they'll cut this out.
But if nothing else, cross-reference your ability to shut the business down. So that when they look at this ordinance about courts, they understand that they can just avoid payment. Because sometimes we charge people fines for doing things and we never see money.
Well, that's not our goal, is shutting them down, it's a good tool to use. We like to keep everybody's business. It's just, I need them to comply, sometimes it's tough.
But I can meet with Mr. Garland and Attorney Etheridge over the next week or two, and we'll put something in place and bring it back before you all next.
On here also, it mentions residents and businesses have a right to reserve, to appeal to the city manager. So we're going to talk about having something in right that pertains to collecting a fee. And then maybe there'd be some rewording that pertains to residents.
Yes. All right.
So, do we want to vote on that now, wait until you come back?
I would, I would recommend just maybe, well, I'm not sure exactly how the ordinance policy works, but I would recommend let's just maybe give it to the next meeting and then we'll have all the right. We'll have all of the language correct, if you take the information purposes. And if you all have any other additional questions later, we can discuss. All right. Thank you all. And again, I apologize, Matt, sticking around.
Great job.
Chief, what time is it over?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first reading of the ordinance, two thousand nineteen, that's twenty-one zoning, two forty-five Colombian Street.
Yes, Mayor and Council. You've got this map in your packet as well. The property we're discussing, two forty-five Colombian, is at the corner of Colombian and East Broad Street. There was a barn, a tobacco barn warehouse thing, it was torn down there, and the property's been cleared. It's been sold, transferred, new owner. Would like the property to be rezoned, office and residential. It's currently zoned general commercial. Everything else on Colombian Street is zoned office and residential. With the exception of the feed and seed, which is zoned core commercial. On the right-hand side of East Broad Street, we are coming from Main Street, that's all zoned general commercial. And then when, once you get past this piece of property, it's all R six, which is high-density residential. The property owner wants to put a triplex or quadplex, some sort of apartment-type rental units, some sort of rental units there. He has not submitted any plans, but he has kind of sent us kind of a picture of what he's thinking about putting there. Next to the property, from, if you're on East Broad, the property is on your left, the next property is apartments. And then if you go down two or three houses, there's a duplex. So it's not uncommon for this neighborhood. The planning commission recommended changing the parcel to R six, which was, which is more strict than office and residential. Three members of the board were present, one of them is here tonight. The only neighbor who attended the public hearing that we had about this issue simply said that they wanted it to remain residential. Currently, it's not residential at all. It's general commercial. You could put most businesses there. So either designation really would accomplish the concern of the neighbor. The property owner couldn't be here tonight, they had something come up, and they will be here for second reading. But they're just, are imploring you to disregard what the planning commission said, and go with the office and residential. Which, they didn't really give a very clear reason on why not.
For R six.
To make it R six, which is more strict. Again, obviously, any kind of plans that this person would come up with has to go through codes enforcement. And if there's any issue with parking or any of those kinds of issues, Mr. Gany, sure will stop them before they start digging.
We have a lack of rental properties in our community, especially, so I'm in favor of this. When I went and looked around the property, every property that's behind it is rental property. This is the Evans Construction that's behind it. And then all the houses that are going towards Scarlet, on the left-hand side opposite Scarlet, is also on the same, office residential. So I think office residential is a designation that you go forward with.
But regardless of whether this deemed R six or O C, it still can be rental property, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, either way.
So it doesn't matter. So the planning board is recommending, recommending R six?
The planning board's recommending the more restrictive.
Is there any reason for that? Did they indicate?
The best reason that I could gather from the discussion was they had some concern about parking. But, the only neighbor who came up was really just concerned that it was residential and did become some sort of commercial entity. And obviously, you know, the rest of our zoning ordinance and codes enforcement, when they do their site plan review, would, you know, stop them from building anything if there's not enough space for parking.
If we went with the planning commission, it still gets what it wants? What happens?
Well, he doesn't, he won't necessarily be able to, based on the setbacks and the maximum impervious square footage and all that kind of thing, get, get that fourth unit in.
So he can't build what he wants to build right there?
He can't build, well, I, based on this, I don't, without an actual plan, I can't tell you that he can build this.
All right.
On that property, frankly.
Right.
But he has no way of building this if it's R six. And he has said that if, you know, council's going to go with the planning commission, they prefer to withdraw their request to change the zoning if that's the case. And just sell it as commercial property. And I don't know that the neighborhood would want it to be commercial.
We have a planning commission in place, and I think we need to go with a recommendation.
At some point, we got to worry about the rental property issues in our community.
Does he, did, Mr. Evans, did he say when he would have a blueprint or whatever it is that he?
Well, he hasn't had any kind of site plan because you can't have one drawn until the zoning designation is determined.
So the problem is, the way it's zoned now, he's not able to do the fourth.
The way it's zoned now, he can't do a duplex. He can't do anything with it now.
It's commercial property right now.
Right now, it's commercial. He can build a single, single-family home and that's it, in terms of residential. He wants to do something more in the duplex, triplex, or quadplex, whatever he can figure out and fit with his engineer or architect.
And the planning commission couldn't give you a?
The best they came up with was parking, and I didn't really see that as an issue, given that our zoning ordinance addresses parking.
And the majority of the property that's right there now is already, is rental property now?
It's already rental property. And that wasn't even the concern of the neighbor, who did show up.
But as R six, it just can't do all of what he wants. He can still build whatever he want to build, except that it can't, the quantity. The quantity is what the situation is.
And of course, there is a precedent for, council has overlooked planning commission's recommendation on several occasions. Most notably in this kind of situation, South of Pearl. The planning commission recommended a completely different zoning designation than was originally approved. It ended up being approved, which was general commercial to allow that business to open. And I think we can all say that that was not a bad choice.
Has always been zoned G C?
From my understanding, it's been zoned G C since these maps were made. But if you notice on this map, it does look kind of strange, that it's the only piece that's G C on that side of the road. And it may have been labeled G C when it was a tobacco barn or used as part of the feed and seed. And they may have just said, oh, well, it's being used as commercial, we'll slap general commercial on it, when they made it.
If you look at the blocks, you've got R six as a huge chunk, and then directly beside it, you have another chunk that's office residential. He's literally asking for that line to extend one property down, and he's doing that same rectangle.
Well, if you look at the, that street there, it's Colombian. Everything on that street, even the houses, are in office and residential.
So why wouldn't we make this one different if he's wanting to change to that? Mr. Seagulls?
I'm just going on the recommendation of the planning commission, plus if you recall from the previous meeting, the improvements he made on that street were not to our ordinance. Consequently, if you recall now, DOT has given us Colombian Street to maintain because it was not, the setback was not in place.
And you're correct.
And we don't compound the problems.
Hold on, you're correct on that, but that would be a problem with our building inspector not doing his job, unfortunately. But this doesn't negate that we need more rental properties in the entire block as office residential.
And then he may, unfortunately, he may, it may be perceived that this is punishing him for something that the past building inspector didn't do or allowed him to do that it had been allowed.
And every time.
And he's come to the council before.
Has he asked him for an old, old residential?
He has asked him for office and residential.
And he's a developer.
Yeah.
He's a developer that's been building throughout our community, but not in the city. The only two times he's been to the city, it looks like, and this time, we don't approve what he's interested in, the office residential, which the rest of the block is, this will be another time where we said, we don't want you to invest and build properties within our city. I don't think that's the route we want to go with investors who are interested in investing in our city.
Well, it's not the route, but it's like we ignore our planning. I mean, our department, their recommendations and things of that sort. I just, you know, I'm for all of this, you know, I'm for everybody building. But he has built there on Colombian, he has built in there. Like you say, he's building all around. I just, I truly want to know, and seem like our planning commission, they would have all this information as well. What is their apprehensive? Seem like it was, it's just like you're laying it out to us.
I laid it out the exact same way you laid it out from the planning commission.
Yeah, to tell me what it is that they're opposition to going with it, because it.
Well, and they had the same, perhaps the same concern that Mr. Seagulls had about the properties. You know, some people don't like how those little houses on Colombian Street look, frankly. They don't like that they're not to the specifications, and I can't say that that's not part of it.
I see.
But will we penalize him for something that? I mean, we dropped the ball on that, why is he going to be penalized for it? I'm not, not real sure. How to justify it.
So we could theoretically, it's an office residential, he could want to build a fourplex on it.
But if he doesn't have the space for it, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
So his plans is, and then he's got an office residential.
Correct.
That he wishes he had as a core commercial. And if he comes back and asks council to turn around and add that as a core commercial, I think he's going to run into a real problem.
Miss Robb, with this duplex, townhouse, whatever he want to build, look, he has four apartments for whatever?
That's what he's trying to do, is four units.
Is that space large enough for that?
It depends on how big it is. I don't know. And that is without any kind of plan, I can't say yes it is or no it's not.
It wouldn't be approved if there's no parking?
Right, it's got to have parking spaces per spot, per unit.
Yes.
And if he can't, with the engineer, figure out how to do that on there, that's his problem, that's not our problem.
Exactly. The economics of it is not our interest. What our interest is, is do we want to make this triangle more of a rectangle, include his property in the same block as every other property behind it? Or do we want to go and make a zigzag line and make it part of the R six? But they're directly beside each other. Office residential is not anything like zoning a commercial. You still can build a house or an apartment. But one thing I know, and the previous comprehensive plan tells us, is we need more properties here, we need more rental properties. I was in a rental property last year. I know the lack of resources we have in this community on that subject.
Well, an office and residential sort of serves as a buffer zone. So you don't end up with general commercial or car commercial budding up right next to residential. So office and residential is supposed to serve, by our, the definition, is supposed to be a buffer between residential areas and commercial areas. Obviously, in that area, you've got core commercial, which is the downtown. Then you've got that strip of O R, which is like, you know, Joe's Grill, the health department, some of that stuff, Eats Chiropractic, some of those types of businesses in there. And then you've got residential behind it.
So if we change this O R, and then he come in and want to build that duplex, whatever, and don't have the space, we can deny it because of that?
Correct. Code enforcement can deny it, not give him a building permit if it doesn't fit.
One thing I would say is, number one, if somebody wants to build something in the city, I think I should be the first person that should talk to him, okay? Because I'm the one that has to approve it or deny it. He has not talked to me one time about anything he wants to do. He did talk to me about some property at Avenue D and Main Street. He wanted to put four houses down there, and I told him, I said, there's no way you can do it. However you look at the property, there's no way you can put four houses down there. So then, he decided to trade the property with Curtis for Memorial Park, to take the property down at the corner of Broad Street and Colombian Street. But he's not come to me and asked me, what can I build on this property with the size that we have? What I will tell you is he presented to us a patio-style home, or a, what was he calling it? A? He called it a? Let's see. He called it a townhome. Okay. Well, number one, if you look in our ordinance, the ordinance says to build a townhouse in the city of Dulwich, and you got to have a minimum of fifty thousand square feet. If you add all the property together, you don't have like forty-three thousand square feet. So he's not going to be able to build it to start with. You know, if he wants to build three houses there or something, that's fine. He's got enough room to do it, I think. I mean, he hasn't submitted anything to me. I will say that when I took this job, and I think that's where the planning commission was coming from, whenever they made the decision that they made, when I took this job, I caught a lot of grief for all the little houses that he built on Colombian Street. Because it was zoned office and residential. And so the stipulations were a lot more broader as to what he could do. Now, I was also told that no plans were ever submitted until after he actually started the project. I don't know that, because I wasn't here. That was a year prior to me coming. And now, he can't be penalized for what happened prior, because he was allowed to do it by the city or whoever. And, you know, city council, my department, city manager, nobody, you know, there's nothing we can do about it now because he was allowed to build those houses. But there's way too many houses on a short, on a small piece of land. They're not the code because building that close is supposed to have firewalls and everything else. Key statement to me is being in the past, if I can't build four, I don't want to build anything. Well, that's the wrong mentality to have. To me, if you can get rid of three houses, it's better than getting rid of four houses. But nevertheless, I think he should be coming to my department first, instead of trying to go around my department and get everything done, because I'm the one that's got the approval.
I don't think that that was the intent, and I think based on how you're describing it, he could see this as the city or you, as a fellow builder, taking some sort of negative impact on it. And I know that's not the case.
I think we're making assumptions, but we need to talk to reality.
But what we're talking about reality is, if anybody came up here and said, I want to make this office and residential, why wouldn't you? That doesn't make any sense not to.
But our planning commission.
Based on the planning commission, that is, I mean, they should know more, and then missing that what?
But again, think about what this looks like from a third-party view. If I'm, if, if he didn't have his name on that zoning sheet, and he didn't have any plans submitted, then you're judging it based on who he is.
No, 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 no. I'm judging it based on the information that the city inspector just gave us. So even if we change the zoning to that, it's still not feasible.
Which is fine, which is totally fine, wouldn't it not make sense that it's office and residential though?
Let's go ahead and call and vote, so we can go on with this, because going.
Let's table it, till we get more information.
I'll table it.
Table it.
What information would you like?
From the planning commission.
I think he should, I, I, I think he should go speak with Alex, and then Alex can come back and present to us from what he's wanting to do, what Mr. Evans wants to do, and he can bring that information back to us, and we've got accurate information. And I think a lot of people is getting into this whole thing here, and we don't want to make it look like he's being targeted, as you say, I don't know why he would be targeted.
I don't see why he would be either, but when you look at that map, that little corner looks weird. It doesn't ma, I mean, if you were to be redrawing this and not know anything of what was there, would you not think that that would be office and residential? I mean, just by looking at the map?
So you had that conversation with Alex, and you presented information with back with us? And then I think we can make some intelligent decisions.
And to be clear, the conversation is?
But the department that we have, that is a, is a city, of what?
Mayor volunteer.
But that's what we, we take, we got them functioning. We should consider that, to me. So that's what I'm saying. I would like to hear why they put those restrictions. Not the.
So you want the?
I mean, if you say R six is restricted, it's just another zone to me that is just a different level. So I want to see why, in your presentation, you think that they made a bad decision. That's the way I'm getting it from you.
Well, I don't really understand why they chose R six over O R, other than, the only reason that I could come up with, they mentioned parking and the, and the little houses next to it. And if anybody else came to say this should be O R, I don't see how we would deny them.
But rather than assume what they meant, let's hear what it is. Let's see why they did that, along with the information we are going to get from Alex.
So that, to be clear, the information we're getting from Alex is Alex is going to contact Evans Construction.
Let them contact him.
I'll tell you right now, it's not going to do any good for me to contact him, because he's not going to answer.
What will he talk to? Mr. Evans, the Evans folks can't really, what can they submit to Alex if they don't know what the zoning is? You can't, are you going to pay an engineer twice for plans?
You can't conversate to indicate your plan.
Here's my question.
Okay.
We want to have some back and forth between some entity and possibly Alex at our, as our building inspector. And we want to find out if what he's trying to build will fit under property as far as our codes enforcement goes. Is that the question? Don't need to repeat that. I'm trying to figure out what we are taking.
What is the extra information that we need, because?
For council's purposes, what is the information y'all are after? I just want to be clear on what we're doing.
What I would say is this, if, if, if I want to buy a car, before I buy that car, I'm going to find the price. And then I'm going to call the insurance company and find out how much the insurance is on it. And I'm going to go to the courthouse and find out what the taxes is. So I feel that if you want to build something, you need to check, see how much land you got, whatever. I would say go to the bill inspector, because you can do it without. That's what I would think.
But in your example, I as a third party would research your information.
Well. Mayor, to your example, I don't know that Mr. Gany, Mr. Gany has plenty of things to do, and drawing up plans for potential investors isn't one of them. I mean, I think that's, that's kind of what you're asking him to do, in a way, is come up with something theoretical, plans.
You have to know what you want to build. This is what, well, we're looking at this, we're already saying, if this is what you want to build, it's not enough land.
We don't know that.
But we don't know that for sure.
So we can't make those assumptions.
Well, we need to table this because we're not getting it with it. We need to table it, and you can go up and down.
Table it. I would like to motion that we table this until a future date.
I second.
Is the motion in second?
I second it, I second it.
Ms. Milling had something to say.
Just, just had a question. Is the biggest difference between the R six and the office residential, the minimum lot size that has to be there?
Something about the lot size or the impervious service area?
It is, and it doesn't have to be as much in an office residential.
He feels it's not as restrictive. I don't know that that's the case, but if that's how he feels, who's the property owner, I'm just?
I'm just wondering from, from the building inspector's standpoint, what the difference is from a practical standpoint from the office residential and the R six. I know the R six is more restrictive, but in what ways is it more restrictive for a property owner?
People have, I believe, I believe, without having it right in front of me, I believe you got some of, a little bit of difference in the setbacks. Is that right, Lisa?
The setbacks are actually the same. But it's something about the impervious service and lot size and, and the density and stuff like that.
So impervious circuit, circuits, we're probably talking about.
The residential density is also possibly.
But we know, the thing we got to be concerned about is, is, in our last storm, I tried to go to Hardee's to get something to eat, and I couldn't go down Broad Street because it was flooded at the old warehouse, and there was a car that was stuck in the water. I turned around, and I think, well, okay, I'll go to Subway, and of course, I had a hard time making it down Pearl Street in front of Takis and that area, and nearly flooded out. So I am concerned about what we're adding as additional runoff at that particular location.
Well, currently, well, before that, it was a, it was completely covered, before that building was torn down. There was, it was complete coverage.
I don't want to say because it was worse beforehand, I want to continue it being bad now. I just want to get some sense of what we're working with, and as a practical matter, are we compounding it? I just wanna get some sense of what we're working with and as a practical matter, are we compounding a problem one way or the other? How we zone, how much water is standing there at southeastern grain company and the other businesses.
I don't mean to interrupt you and I apologize, but that was the case and having a core commercial would make it more of a hazard as far as stormwater because.
It is, it is what it is now.
Because if you had a core commercial, aren't we right in assuming that you can build directly up to the road?
We got a motion, we got to take this, we got a motion on it, and second.
Isn't that fair though?
It's taken. I mean, we said.
All that favor taken, that's living on my side.
I, I'm on the next one. Why is it a cigarette stay? The Williamson Park Committee has a couple of people that are gonna be rotating off. And they have put forward a nominee, Mr. Jay Irvin. He's an attorney and property owner in town who would like to serve. The committee approves of that and would ask that you nominate him to serve on the committee. Jay Irvin, the lawyer.
For the vote, I'm for the vote.
For Williamson Park Committee.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the Williamson Park?
Make a motion that we appoint John M. Irvin III, also known as Jay, to a term on the Williamson Park Committee. Also known as.
What? I'm gonna go to the assembly, we just, we just, for Williamson Park, boy, all in favor? Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so very much for that. Like I said, it's hurricane season, everybody. Let's be prepared. Great. Anybody else? Got a second, second? Okay. September the third, two thousand nineteen, sixty, regular monthly meeting, Dalton City Council. We have, like I said, we have the race coming up, the old alumni coming up, the trucks coming through town on the twenty-ninth. Let's be prepared for that and stay out. Can I get a motion?
Get a motion that we adjourn. Hallelujah.
You made a motion, everybody. All in favor? Ladies and gentlemen.